Alrighty, everyone. Without any further delays, we're gonna get started. Again, we thank you all so much for coming out today. We know that Saturdays are very important to everyone, if for no other reason except to relax. Really appreciate you taking this time to come out. Join me in welcoming a man who has great vision for the city of Inglewood, who took the time out to put together today's town hall meeting to inform us of some very important things that have taken place or soon to take place, and a few other very important announcements. Without any further ado, our own Mayor James Buds. Thank you.
Good morning. I want to introduce, we have a guest, Michael Feldman, Deputy Executive Director from Los Angeles World Airports, and he has an announcement later in the meeting. You know, this has been a... the last two years have been one of great progress, great struggle, and great calibration for the city. I thought it would be fitting to start this off with a talk about one of the highlights of my tenure since I've been here, and that was when the Space Shuttle Endeavour came through our city, and its route's being decommissioned. And I'm sure many of you have seen this time lapse, and...
After 20...
I never get tired...
...to outer space, and 4,671 orbits around planet Earth. Endeavour has completed its final voyage, mission number 26. And thank you for making this great city of ours, the city of angels, just a little bit better today.
You know, I started with the Endeavour story because in government and in this country today, you hear so much about things that can't be done, how bad things have gotten, but the Shuttle Endeavour story represents belief in something bigger than ourselves that can't happen, and that's the way that I think, and that's the way that I manage. The Endeavour was manufactured by Rockwell International, a company my father worked for and retired from. The first flight was May 7th of 1992, the final mission was September 19th of 2012. Twenty-five missions in total, traveled over 122 million miles, and 4,671 orbits of the Earth. Three satellites were deployed from this magnificent craft. But its last journey was a mere 12 miles, from L.A. International Airport through Inglewood to the Science Center. This was an international event that lasted 48 hours. It drew the largest crowd for an outdoor event in the history of the city of Inglewood, 15,000 people, between the Forum lot and those strewn across Manchester. And now the Big Donut is an international icon, just like that Santa Monica Bay Yacht Harbor sign, okay? And so, that's why I start with that, because that is my intent, that is my belief, that we will be positioned to be an international city. I'm not supposed to be clicking this. I like that scene right there. And so, today, we're gonna talk about our future. We're gonna talk about the Madison Square Garden purchase of the Forum, the Hollywood Park Tomorrow development that had lain fallow for the past five to six years until we signed the development agreement for the Forum, and Jermar McCallum's gonna spend more time talking to you about that. We're gonna talk about what everybody wants to know about public works, about our street resurfacing, about those water projects that we promised you that would be funded when we finally started to right-size our fees for water service, and the residential sound insulation program has been fixed. And so, before we go any further, I want to introduce the incoming general manager for the new, soon-to-be revitalized Forum, Nick Spomenato, and my biggest accomplishment was pronouncing his last name right, if I did. And we have been working on this project for well over 18 months to get to where we are today, and he's gonna share with you some of the things it's gonna bring to the city of Inglewood, and what's in store for this iconic venue. Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, everyone. The Madison Square Garden Company is incredibly excited about the transformation of the Forum. To add it to our list of iconic venues, Madison Square Garden, Radio City Music Hall, the Beacon Theater, the Chicago Theater, the Wang Theater in Boston has us really, really pumped, I guess is a word that I like to use. MSG's gonna invest at least $50 million in the Forum, which will overhaul the arena and bring it up to the same high standards of other venues in the country. We want it to be the venue that everybody wants to come to, the way it used to be. I'm fortunate in that I've done shows at the Forum, I've gone to the Forum, I've seen Lakers games, I've seen Kings games, I've seen concerts, so when the opportunity came to come out and Madison Square Garden said, "We're gonna redo the building," I jumped at the chance. The Forum will bring some powerful economic impacts to Inglewood also, which is, I know, important to the community. It's going to generate $34 million in general fund revenue over 30 years, and an incremental $25 million in property taxes. Another important thing that the mayor stressed to us from day one are their jobs, getting people in Inglewood to work, getting businesses in Inglewood involved. That's been his... every day, he hammers that into me. We just completed a project where we pulled all the seats out of the building, and the company that we hired, we showed them our OPA and our DA agreement, we told them the importance of bringing local people into this workforce, and of the 15 people that worked on the project, seven were newly hired local Inglewood residents. That's something we were very proud of. They're all paid prevailing wage. There's been some question about prevailing wage. So what prevailing wages... the state mandates a certain wage to pay for a certain trade. And you take that figure, and what we do is we have a project manager that will look at the pay sheets of the people that have done the job, and before they... until they verify that the job has been paid properly, we don't pay the contractor. And that's kind of the checks and balances that goes on with prevailing wage. Once everybody signs off and we understand that they've been paid the prevailing wage, we then pay the contractor, and we turn the information over to the city, and the city gets to verify it as well. That's the business part of it. The thing that has me excited is a day doesn't go by that an agent, a manager, or producer does not call us and say, "When will that building open?" We are excited to say that we're ahead of schedule. The whole industry, the entertainment industry, is looking forward to the new Forum. I get to go to work every day with a smile on my face because I get to see what's going on and what we're planning on doing. So what I'd like to do now is give you guys a brief little... a brief little view behind the curtain, let's say. So if we could play the video? So that's why I get psyched every time I walk into that building, because I see... I don't see what is, I see what will be. And one of the big... one of the biggest things with our decision to come here, once the mayor was elected, we knew that we had a partner in Inglewood, and that's something that excites us. And it excites me every time I walk around the parking lot with the rest of the community, and we talk about what's coming. We're just very happy to be here, we're very proud to be here, very proud to be partners with this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. You know, a big part of what we will be has to start with vision, and it has to start with believing in things can be better than they have been. And we have a sad history in our city of having officials that represent us to focus on the things that have gone wrong, and the belief that things never can be. And you will never, never manifest your destiny by focusing on the things that went wrong, except to correct them, and have a belief in the future and moving forward. Now, this was not an easy negotiation, because you have to understand that billion-dollar companies have business models. They locate future businesses where they believe there can be success, where there's going to be a sufficient rate of return. And so, a company like Madison Square Garden, which has all of its assets basically in New York City, Radio City Music Hall, The Garden, to come to the West Coast and open up their only operation, their only flagship, in the city of Inglewood speaks volumes about us. And that has a significant impact, and had a significant impact, on the investment dollars that flowed to the Hollywood Park Tomorrow project. The last piece of this puzzle was, it was expected that parking would be provided across the street at the Walmart site, as it always had been in the past, but they would not negotiate a long-term lease. And so, to open this venue, Madison Square Garden had to know that they had some backup plan for parking. And so, they sought out the city, and we looked at parcels that we had available, and... I need to go back... to see what was available. And we had a number of parcels that were owned either by the redevelopment agency or were purchased with FAA dollars. And these parcels, as those of you that have lived here for a while know, have lain fallow and vacant, some as many as long as 25 years. Another thing about these parcels, if you notice about them, the ones in red are FAA purchased, and the other, the ones in yellow are redevelopment parcels, is that the majority of them front 102nd Street, and only a couple of them have Century frontage. The ones that are in red or pinkish color, those are the ones that we offered to negotiate a long-term lease for. The largest contiguous parcel, Parcel G, is held by the redevelopment agency, and that has the most Century frontage, and that has the most potential for future development. Because these are disjointed, they don't have the same value as a 60-acre continuous block, like when you fight with the Walmart site, or the 232 acres that you find that's held by Hollywood Park Tomorrow. And so, we entered into a... we developed a lease with Madison Square Garden. Cushman Wakefield, a professional appraiser, gave an appraisal, and they gave a price. We had that reviewed, and got a concurrence on that price, if they were to purchase it in seven years. It's our hope that they will find alternative parking, and the purchase never has to take place. But, in the meantime, for this to go forward, they have to have a backup. And so, I've heard complaints, and I heard a lot of complaints at the last council meeting where we approved this, that this property would be worth so much more seven years from now. And the reality is, is that it hasn't happened in the last 25 years. We've had an exclusive negotiations agreement that lasted over three years to develop a promenade down there, and it went nowhere. We've had two exclusive negotiation agreements since I've been here, and they went nowhere. So, we could sit there and hold on to the land and hope that we get a couple million more dollars in seven years, but the reality is, is that if we let this opportunity go by, we'll probably just be sitting there holding the parcels. The FAA expects us to dispose of these parcels in some manner. And so, I want to show you just how difficult it is, even as crucial as this to our moving forward, I want to show you a snippet of our last council meeting.
No, before you move, I would ask to be recognized.
No, we've moved already.
Oh, you've moved already?
So, can you speak? A second.
Okay, so, just for the record, you moved that, Mr. Mayor? You moved the item, correct?
Mayor Buds and Councilman Morales.
Hmm?
Mayor Buds and Councilman Morales.
Oh, okay. Oh, you've started my time already. Would you please set the clock to five minutes, please? Mr. Mayor, would you instruct the timekeeper to do that?
You started talking, you asked a question. Start at 9:5.
Question, Mr. City Manager. Have we notified the public that we are taking bids for this lease agreement, as well as purchase of this property?
No, we have not done this.
No, we have not, and it's not something we would need to do so. No, we have not done that.
So, for the record, you're under the... you have been advised by a legal counsel that it is not necessary for us to place this out for bid?
No, we're not under that obligation.
Mr. Saunders, my city attorney, you're under the impression that we do not need to place this out for bid at this time?
No, primarily, this is a lease agreement with an option to buy, and I have already opined that, no, we are not required to go out for a bid to do this.
I'm gonna ask the question once again of the city manager. Are you absolutely positive that we do not have to place this lease agreement and open it up for bid?
Yes.
Really? Well, I have 44 seconds left. I beg to differ with you on that one, but I'll accept it at this time. I'm going to conclude.
Commissioner, City Clerk.
Council members. Actually, I'd like to speak. Like I said, I'm really concerned that this meeting is not being televised, because it's very, very important. Is the best use of these parcels a parking lot? I doubt it. Is MSG getting a good deal? Actually, they're getting a phenomenally good deal. So, I'm gonna hold two people responsible for that, not the corporate interests, because you're in business, and this is what you do. You're representing your interests. I'm gonna hold the two people responsible, our mayor, most specifically, and our city manager, more so the mayor. So, when people talk about this out in the community, I want them to hold you, mayor, responsible for the deal points that the public does not believe is in their best interests. You, most specifically. How interested are we as a community to have this revitalized entertainment venue called the Forum, purchased by Madison Square Garden? How interested are we in a community, as a community, for that? And how reliable is Walmart, the neighbor to the south, with regard to their 60 acres making it available for parking? Remember, that six... that acreage to the south has historically been used for overflow parking for the Forum. This body, this majority failed to have the vision to have acquired that property, but now we are where we are. You cannot rely upon Walmart to be a good neighbor. That's a given. So then what? If they don't have parking, what? We say, "All right, well, we don't want the $50 million in renovation. We in this city don't need this wonderful entertainment venue that's putting us back on the map." The enthusiasm in our community over Madison Square Garden coming here has been phenomenal. It's been phenomenal, ever since they first came to us with the interest of purchasing the Forum. People are excited again about the future of the city. When the Prince concerts were held, it reminded people of what we once had, bringing thousands of people into the city of Inglewood for entertainment, quality entertainment. It was exciting. This is in the best interests of the city.
I want to tell you that I never cease to be amazed. I just heard one of the most duplicitous double... pieces of double talk that I've ever heard. Blame the mayor for this deal, but we need to do it. And I'm gonna tell you, please don't interrupt me, I'm gonna say, blame me for this. Blame me for coming into a situation with a $17.6 million structural deficit, and overseeing two years of balanced budgets. Blame me for going to Washington the first year I was here, getting $20 million from the FAA, and have them tell us, "Hey, what are you gonna do with those parcels that you have? You haven't recycled them yet." I said, "We're working on it." Blame me for $15 million we received in December of 2012 for residential sound insulation that we're gonna marry with other monies that Wawa's gonna give us, because now we've fixed our relationship with them, to do 1,000 homes in this coming year, and hopefully do 1,000 homes the next year. Blame me for that, too. Blame me because I understand that Walmart is the 60 acres that are contiguous and more valuable than these disjointed parcels that we have on Century, some of them that were purchased in excess of 25 years ago, and have lain fallow all that time. Most of these parcels have been there for 10 years or more. There have been exclusive negotiating agreements for them, and nothing has materialized. It's like having a car that you really like, it's this old beat-up Ford, but you say it's a classic. And funny, nobody wants to pay your price for it, so it sits there in your garage. Blame me if I have sense enough to understand that Walmart is not gonna give a long-term parking solution to MSG, and I understand the business model that says that you really can't invest 50 to 75 million in something that you don't know you'll be able to operate to capacity. And blame me for believing that there'll be some other solution that manifests itself in the next seven years, so that we'll have our cake and eat it, too. That we won't end up selling the parcels, that they'll have their parking, we'll receive revenue for fallow land all this time, someone will at least have made it clean and decent. Blame me for understanding that most of those parcels don't front Century, they front 102. Blame me for carving out the 238,000 square feet of property that actually front Century, and that will give us development opportunities. Blame me for that, too. And blame me for having the guts and the sense to take all the abuse that I do, and work as long as I do to move this city forward, and I have no regrets for that, and I will take it. And you can blame these two guys, too, because it doesn't happen without them. And I'll bet you there's four votes here today, I'll bet you.
That's right.
So, what I'm saying is... what I'm saying is, no, we... first of all, we are on television, and, no, we didn't need to talk about an hour for this, because it comes down to this. Businesses locate in cities based upon their business model and the opportunities that will exist. There are more opportunities to locate in Beverly Hills, Culver City, Redondo Beach, Manhattan Beach, because you're more guaranteed success. And so, for a billion-dollar company to make their only West Coast operation here in the city of Inglewood, there's going to be some give and take. Common sense will tell you that. I would love to get what everybody believes that land is worth, but I'll tell you, Cushman Wakefield did an appraisal, that's where the number came from, we had that appraisal reviewed. So, this is in the best interest of the city. This is that car that's sitting in the garage that we think is worth so much. It's worth what it's worth, and the proof's in the pudding. The free market will take care of snapping up land, and that land has laid there some parcels 25, I think as many as 30 years. So, those are my comments.
Councilmember Stevens.
No.
Councilwoman Judy Dunlop.
Aye.
Councilman Morales.
Aye.
Councilman Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye. Now, I showed that clip so that you can understand how difficult it is when you still operate under the old paradigm, some of us that... Now, I showed that clip so that you can understand how difficult it is when you still operate under the old paradigm, some of us, that the best way to get elected is to create doubt, fear, and anxiety, always perpetuate this myth that people are being taken advantage of. I want to talk to you for a minute about that whole bit about we should have taken redevelopment money and bought the sixty acres from the Walmart site. First of all, they wanted a million and a half an acre. That would have been nineteen million dollars, okay? We gave an eighteen million dollar construction loan out of redevelopment funds to the rehabilitation loan to the Forum, and it will be forgiven over ten years if they meet certain threshold targets for returns to our general fund. We would have had to condemn the Walmart property, first of all, and would have had to pay somewhere between sixty and ninety million instead of eighteen million out of redevelopment funds. We didn't have eighteen months to two years to do a condemnation proceeding because we were on notice that the state was coming after all redevelopment monies. We did a wise thing by putting eighteen million dollars in escrow and obligating it because that would have gone back to the state as well. So, for money that we never would have been, had access to, we have the Forum operated by a billion-dollar company in our city. But you saw that some people felt that that was something to argue about, something to rate and introduce doubt. We're going to have to change and we're going to have to do better. No, everybody doesn't always have to agree, but everybody has to agree that we're going to do what's best for you, the residents, and your city. And now, I'm going to bring up some, someone that everybody knows, the senior project manager for the Hollywood Park Tomorrow Project, Wilson, Meany, and Sullivan, and he's going to talk to us about their project and the new casino operations, and that's Gerard McCollum. Please give him a big hand.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak before you. This is old home for me, this is actually my church, so it's great to actually be in the living room, sharing a little bit about the future for the Hollywood Park Racetrack. Again, my name is Gerard McCollum, I'm the senior project manager for the upcoming development, and I hope you had a chance earlier to see before we started to actually look at the retail model. Some of you may have remembered back in two thousand and nine when we were actually going through the entitlement portion with the city, in which we were asked to actually put together our concept model of what we thought the retail would look like for the project. And just to give you a little bit of an overview of what the project actually entails, Hollywood Park is a huge parcel of land located right dabsmack in the middle of Los Angeles County. It's two hundred and thirty-eight contiguous acres. It's unheard of, that amount of land located right next to the sixty acres that's known as the Walmart land. What that means is it's a great opportunity for someone like our company to come in and reimagine the entire parcel of land, and that's what we did. Many of you, we met in your homes, Etho was a part of the process, and some of these people I know over the years that actually came across with actually visioning what this looked like. We sat down in community charrettes and asked what did the community want to see if we were to actually redevelop the parcel at the time. The park space in this, in this area, it's over twenty-five acres of park space, twenty-three acres being available to the entire city, not just the residents within. And also, the structure that has been put in place is such that the parks pay for itself through the Melrose and the homeowners association fees associated with it, so it does not add to the tax burden within the city. Those are things in which we negotiated the period of time back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, and two thousand and nine. At the end of the day, we can end up with two hundred and thirty-eight acres, six hundred thousand square feet of retail, twenty-five acres of park, two acres of which would be private park space, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-five homes will be built over the life of the project, a brand-new, re-envisioned casino that will go a complete renovation under the, compared to what actually is in place now. Over the course of the period of time, there'll be a number of jobs. Obviously, we estimate somewhere around twelve to thirteen thousand construction jobs through the life of the project. Again, we also have a development agreement and an owner participation, owner's participation agreement, and what those are, those are agreements in which we've negotiated with the city that make sure that the city gets certain things in exchange for us actually moving forward with that. And one of the key programs in that is that there's a local hire requirement, there's also called a workforce outreach program in which we will be out, again, making sure everyone knows what the job opportunities will be and that they can get an opportunity to be able to work on this project, not only when the project is actually in development phase, but actually when the retail gets up and it actually becomes an ongoing concern. It's an exciting project. As many of you know, you know, being here for actually quite some time, the operations at the racetrack are not what it used to be. It does not generate the tax revenues that everyone would assume two hundred and thirty-eight acres would generate for the city. In fact, every year, that budget keeps shrinking dramatically from what it used to be. And when I started that in two thousand and nine, the tax revenues used to be right about one point seven million dollars. It's now under a million dollars. I think it's eight-something, almost nine hundred thousand. It just, it speaks to just a change in the appetite for that type of entertainment that's just no longer viable, especially on such a large parcel of land, two hundred and thirty-eight acres. So, here, we move forward with the Hollywood Park project. The other part, too, is the casino renovation. The casino, casino is actually one of the largest taxpayers in the city, generates close to four million dollars of revenue to the general fund, and that's actually in a very depressed state. In its heyday, that casino used to generate over seven million dollars to the general fund. We're looking to reinvest, reinvigorate that casino so that it gets back up to that market share. Right now, it's licensed for over two hundred tables, it's down to forty-eight operating tables. And as you know, it actually has a much more dramatic impact than just a card club. The pavilion function for the Rotary Club, for quite a few, there's some community events that took place in there, it was like almost our small convention center. But over the years, it's fallen into disrepair and lack of maintenance. Well, we're planning to correct that, and that's what's starting to go on now, is there's a new owner that just occupied the building as of March first, and is starting to do a lot of that. New hires have been taking place, many of them Inglewood residents, and so we will be coming back to you shortly to actually explain a little bit more about how that renovation will move forward and what it will look like going towards the future. I've been on the project since two thousand and six and very excited. We are looking forward this year, actually moving forward. It's the last couple of years, we have kind of, we've been doing a lot of planning with the city, infrastructure drawings, CFD, Melrose bonding, all that has been vetted, approved by city council. All the infrastructure drawings are just about complete, park drawings, everything is complete, so that when we are ready to move forward, we can move forward in expedited manner. And so, this August of this year, we will be actually starting to relocate a certain infrastructure off the site and get ready to actually start construction in January of two thousand and fourteen. So, that's actually finally a good start date for us. So, we're actually very excited that now we are beyond planning, we're beyond all of the approvals, and now we're actually in the mode of now starting to look forward to construction. So, I'll close with that, I'll take any questions if you have any.
Gerard?
Yes.
Come back.
Yes, on the site, let me go actually through what's all entitled on the site. Six hundred thousand square feet of retail, casino in place renovation of a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, twenty-five acres of park space, public park space, capitalized by a lake park in the middle. There was a request from the residents that we do in homage to the infrastructure that's, the infield that's currently in the, in the racetrack, and there'll be a two-tiered lake that will have, that would be capitalized by a twelve-foot, eleven-foot waterfall, which you can see on the model here, that will spill over from the upper lake to the bottom lake, and that waterfall actually will be designed by a company called Wet. Wet and Fluidity are the premier fountain design companies, Bellagio Hotel, a lot of Dubai fountains, we have a number of those type actually in the development, so that it actually is more than another Banana Republic, that's actually a designation center. It's a very exciting development. There's, there's a pad set aside for a boutique hotel to be associated with some of the gaming activity associated with that. There's a four-acre site that's been set aside for a school, but I'm not sure actually we will get there, but that actually was set aside, four acres was given to the city to be able to do that, and so all that is currently in place now, okay?
No more questions?
No more questions? Okay.
We'll be here forever, all right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Got to give him the hook, man, tell him five minutes and he's taking over, right? But we're very excited about that. These two projects are anchors for the future. The Forum begat the financing to complete Hollywood Park Tomorrow. Hollywood Park Tomorrow will beget the redevelopment across Prairie. I'm going to tell you, it's my belief that in, that probably the near future, you're going to see offers tendered for the west side of Prairie between Century and the Council Elementary School, and that will be the launchpad for us. Now, what does this have, what does this mean to you? Well, if you own property here, if you come to play buying a residence here, this is going to have a dramatic impact on property values.
As I walked door-to-door throughout this city for over a year, this program in the streets were what I heard the most about. And shortly after coming into office, after we straightened out that seventeen point six million dollar deficit, we focused on RSI. We commissioned a consultant to do an administrative and operational audit of the program, that was Mr. Mark Weinberger, former city manager, and we made these findings. More houses have been placed into design than funds were available to complete construction. So, ordinarily, the city turns in what's a grant, called a grant implementation program, and they say, we're going to design and construct this many houses in this grant cycle. And then, at the end of that grant cycle, we turn and the report says, well, we said we'd do this, and this is what we actually did. And then, Lawa, who gives us about nine point two million a year in grants, says, okay, and they give us the next allocation. Well, it's a very popular program, as you might imagine, and so politically it became irresistible to have elected, say, well, I want these houses in my district designed because then people feel like there's progress. And so, what happened is we ended up with like a thousand homes designed, used up our grant monies for design, couldn't get them constructed, therefore, we couldn't turn in our audit at the end of the year, and that started a domino effect because we could never turn in that audit, so we lost that grant. And the next year, because we couldn't turn in that audit, we lost that grant, and so here we are, thirty-six million dollars later, and we're running out of money, and everybody, people in design for over five years, and always asking, when am I going to get my house done? Equally important, then we weren't making progress on the other houses or residences in the contours. So, after we figured out what was going on, we hired an in-house consultant, a gentleman by the name of Sidney Allen, who had successfully run Burbank's residential sound installation program, and he came in day-to-day and worked with our people on getting our procedures in track, but we had more to do. I met with the president of the Board of Commissioners for Lawa, talked about our situation, and asked his help in working with us, because ordinarily, when you time out for monies, they're gone to you for good. I also met with Gina Marie Lindsay, the executive director of Lawa, who was my boss at one time, actually, and we talked about the situation, and very fortunate for me, they turned it over to Michael Feldman, Deputy Executive Director. I held that similar title, but I was in charge of home and security and public safety, and so he has worked so hard with us, he's actually stationed his staff in-house for about two months to go through our records and help us reassemble our records so that we could try to gain eligibility again. Along the way, we sought a twenty million dollar grant when I came into office from the FAA, which they gave us, received another fifteen million in December, and all that has led to this. I prepared a council initiative for the March nineteenth council meeting to ratify an agreement between myself and the executive director of Lawa. As part of that agreement, we've retained a construction management firm to oversee and conduct the design and construction process for insulating our homes. We're going to hire an auditing firm to complete the audits of the past years of the program that were started by our in-house staff and assisted by Lawa accountants. We're going to provide quarterly reports on program performance and expenditures, and we're going to align program staffing with program productivity metrics. What that means is, we're going to drop the percentage of cost for our in-house people versus the number of homes that we do. Somewhere along the way, a decision was made to hire a number of people paid for by noise mitigation funds, and so we have a higher percentage of staff cost than other programs do. And so, we're going to go through attrition and start to shrink our program. We've already lost our program director, who was retired as of last Thursday, and that position won't be filled, his role will be taken on by this construction management firm. Our goal is to insulate a thousand residences in the next twelve months and do another thousand in the twelve months thereafter. You know, I know a lot of you who read this new pseudo-paper that's coming to town have been led to believe a lot of things, that the money was spent on other things, that the mayor would pit neighbor against neighbor, and a lot of nonsense like that, and we're going to have some council people say things like that. I'll tell you what we have been doing. We've been adults, we've been doing our business, we've been quietly, maturely negotiating with an entity that knows anything, and based upon our credibility, has agreed to work with us and free up money to insulate your homes. And so, I'm very happy with that, to introduce someone I have great respect for, Michael Feldman, Deputy Executive Director, Los Angeles World Airport Assistant.
I could not be more pleased or proud to be here, representing the executive director as well as all the women and men at Los Angeles World Airports. Dealing with the less positive aspects of commercial aviation is something we are very committed to, and we could not be happier to be here to talk with you today about what the next steps are. I do want to say that I would not be standing here today if it were not for the efforts of your mayor and, and his new team. I've had an opportunity to work with Mr. Fields, Mr. Esparza, and I want to let you know that they are doing a remarkable job in representing you and in certainly the interactions that I've had with them. It's a bright new day, and I'm very grateful to have the partnership with them. We're absolutely committed to working with the city to achieve the goal the mayor just set forth for us, and that's to insulate a thousand homes over the next twelve months. I don't want to kid anybody, that's an aggressive goal, it's achievable, but it's going to require that we all work together and certainly that the city departments all come together with that common goal in mind. And I will tell you that the path forward does look very positive. The mayor talked about the properties that were being bought back in the early nineteen eighties with FAA dollars. I was the person who brought the first one point five million dollars of FAA money to the city and presented that to Mayor Ed Vinson in nineteen eighty-four. So, that just tells you how long ago this commitment began, and it's a pleasure to be back in front of you again, talking about where we go from here. That we already, the mayor mentioned that we did have our staff embedded in, in the city staff's offices. That can be a very uncomfortable thing at times, and I want to let you know that, once again, the openness and transparency in which our, the Lawa personnel, my staff, interacted with city staff was, once again, a remarkable thing to see. Most people have a very hard time admitting when they made a mistake or when things didn't go the way they were supposed to, and I want to commend everybody from the mayor as well as his staff for recognizing that change was necessary and to get about getting it, getting the right things put in place. So, you should be very proud of all of your, your elected mayor as well as his professional The action plan moving forward represents a clean break from the past, and there are milestones that must be completed, which the mayor talked about briefly, I won't go over those again, but the city is on the path to being fully eligible, not only for funding, which we had to withhold until the records could be corrected and accurate, but for future eligibility as well. And I think the last thing I want to say is, the bottom line is, there's two And I think the last thing I wanna say is, the bottom line is, there's two parts to the bottom line as we move forward. The first is to get the homes insulated. That's the number-one goal. Right next to it, though, is we have to be able to keep track and be able to report on how the money was used. Believe me, I've been parts of audits with the federal government in the past, it's really nice when you can give them the answers that they're looking for, instead of having to run around trying to find the information necessary to respond to them. So there's two measures of success. One is absolutely to get as many homes insulated as we can, and two is to make sure that we can always report on where, how the money was used. And with that, I know we're a little short on time, but I'll end with how I started. I would not be standing here today were it not for the efforts of Mayor Butts. Thank you very much. And actually, if you want, and if it's okay with the mayor, I have the agreement right here, which he can sign in front of you.
What's this part about the second mortgage on my house? This is the agreement that I said we're going to put before the council on next Tuesday. So let your council people know this is a must-do. And so we have someone from our community, one of the owners of Brass and Brass Enterprises, the CEO and managing partner, Glenda Brass, who's gonna talk to you a little bit about the impact on what's the current state of Inglewood real estate and what impact this may have on us.
Good morning. I should say afternoon, I think it's a little afternoon, isn't it? Well, for sure, the death of real estate has been drastically overstated. Well, inventory is down, prices are up, it's an investors' free-for-all and a seller's market. Mr. Mayor, residents of Inglewood, I really appreciate the opportunity to stand before you and share with you where we are today as far as real estate is concerned. Now, I've had a front-row seat in the last however many years with regard to the real estate market, as far as our ups and downs and highs and lows. Remember back in two thousand and four, when they, we had this bubble burst, actually before the bubble burst, where we had a lot of individuals chasing very few properties, we had multiple offers on lots of things, prices were bid up significantly, which resulted in this serious foreclosure market that we had, that we're actually just coming out of. And the only way that we were able to recover from that to where we are now is through government intervention with Obama and a few other programs that were put in place to help to stave that, that really chilly market we were in. Well, today is a little bit different, but it's sorta kind of the same. And the reason for that is, and I'm gonna try to make this concise, because I don't want the hook, so I'll make this as short as possible. I did a quick analysis of where we are, Inglewood, over the last couple of months. I analyzed maybe, over the last couple of months, a hundred and seventy-five listings in various stages of the process. Tell you a little bit about what that looked like. Ninety, or fifty-one percent of those were regular transactions, regular sellers, standard listings, where individuals sold their homes, or investors purchased and resold, or like the city of Inglewood just recently sold a couple of properties that they purchased, renovated, and sold to regular homeowners. That's that ninety, that's fifty-one percent of the market. Fifty-two of those listings or properties were short sales, where banks had agreed to allow individuals to sell for less than what they owe. A different trend from a couple of years, or a year or so ago, where the banks were not as opt, are not as inclined to allow an individual to sell for less than what they owe. Foreclosures, on the other hand, represented about twenty-four of those a hundred and seventy-five listings. And you compare that to back in the day, where the foreclosures would have actually been at the top of that list. And what that means is that the banks are employing other strategies to help homeowners, that is, the short sale modifications, and allowing them to exit a little bit, with a little bit more dignity from their current situations. That were brought about as a result of that two thousand and three-four situation that we were in. Well, these stats are indicative of where we are right now. It's completely flipped. Now, to share a little bit more about where we are, and you can kinda see why what we're doing now is so important. Inventory in Inglewood, and when I say Inglewood, I'm just talking about what I've done for Inglewood. However, this same story is played out in communities all over the state, so this is not just Inglewood where things like this is happening. Inventory is down in Inglewood about eighty-two percent from a year ago. The sales prices, the values of homes are up about twenty-five percent from a year ago. In a normal market, you have about six months' worth of inventory. In today's market, you have about two months, which is very, very low. Now, the average time that a property is on the market today is about thirty days. And what that means is that, as soon as a property is placed on the, for sale, we have five, ten, even more offers to purchase that property, which of course starts that cycle of bidding the price up, which is why we have that twenty-five percent increase. Now, this looks to me a lot like it did back in the day. Sounds familiar. The story I told you initially about a lot of properties, or I should say, few properties being chased by lots of buyers. Now, because the interest rates are low, and the property values are still relatively low, we have that situation at the beginning of some kind of, I won't call it a downturn, but we have a little bit of an issue, especially for individuals who are looking to buy these properties and live in it. Even though unemployment is up a little bit in Inglewood, there is so much money chasing these properties by way of investors who have extra cash, so they are competing with the regular homeowner who does not have, who does not have the means to participate at that level, because they're buying in bulk, they have various strategies that they've employed to move these properties. They buy, renovate, and flip, or they buy, renovate, and hold to rent, which is creating a little bit of a shortage in the market. I won't go into the reasons, because I see the mayor inching a little bit closer. But I'd just like to say that that's why those facts are why this development project is so important. You heard, we have two hundred, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-five pieces of real estate that are gonna be introduced into Inglewood. For individuals like you, who are looking to buy, to move up, to do whatever it is that you want to do as far as real estate is concerned, these, these properties are gonna be extremely valuable moving forward. Values are up in Inglewood. It's a seller's market, so I don't anticipate that Inglewood will have any problem moving the three thousand pieces of property or more. Mr. Mayor, I'm not gonna make you stand there any longer. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share the little bit that I did, and if you have any additional questions following this, then please let me know.
You know what I was trying to get at, Glenda, in addition to all that great information is, this is, here's the big takeaway as far as confidence in Inglewood. You have a number of investors, consortiums, that have pooled money, that are buying foreclosed properties, renovating them, which is good for us, because it renovates the housing stock, but they are holding on to them and renting them, because they're doing that. Why? Because they believe property values would continue to climb here. Okay? That happens when investors see vision and they see progress in a city. So that's a, that's a, that's a good indicator that people besides me and the other two council members that vote for things see future in our city. I'm gonna introduce our city manager, Artie Fields, who's been with us for about a year and a half, and he's part of the nucleus of new department head leadership that we've brought to the city, and he's gonna discuss the Crenshaw LEX Light Rail Project. And so, without further ado, Mr. Fields.
Good morning, well, good afternoon, everybody, and thank you, Mayor, for inviting me and allowing me to speak today at your town hall meeting. You know, one of the things I like about coming to these community meetings is, before the meeting gets started, you get a chance to talk to people and hear their stories and tell them a little about, a little bit about yourself. But I had an opportunity to speak to a young lady, and she said, "Do you work for the city?" And I said, "Yeah." And she said, "Well, what do you do?" And I said, "I'm the city manager." And I got this perplexed look, and I'm not surprised, you know, because a lot of people only think of city manager, it's not like the police chief, where you know the police chief fights crime, you know that the finance director's in charge of paying the bills and getting things done that way, and then when you think of a parks and rec director, you think about the person who maintains the parks and provides recreation programs for citizens, and there's even a TV show, Park and Rec, so you have some idea. And I say it all, I say all that to say that, when you think of those positions, something in your mind, you think about, you can connect with what those people do, but when you think about the city manager, you know, I get this blank look, it's, "Okay, what does the city manager do?" So I just wanna spend a couple of seconds and tell you about a few things. I'm hired by the council, the mayor and the city council, and my goal is to, my role is to implement the vision and the policies of the city council, and I do that with the help of an executive team of eighteen professionals who are experts in their field, and together we work to get things done. If you can imagine, it's like a machine, a car machine, or a car engine, you know, we all have to work together, and my role is to make, to create these linkages so that the team works well, so that the motor works well, because if it doesn't, one piece doesn't work, the motor either doesn't work, or you have a bumpy ride. And so I can tell you that we have a great team here in the city of Inglewood, and that we're working well to implement a lot of the programs that you're gonna hear about today, and I think three of those members of mayor will be introducing of our executive team later on. Lastly, one of the things I'm responsible for as well is, the charter says that the city manager will present a balanced budget every year, and I'm not sure if many of you know this, but as the mayor alluded to earlier, the city has gone through thirty million dollars of its reserves from two thousand eight to two thousand eleven. As the mayor mentioned earlier, since he's come on board, we've had two balanced budgets, and I wanna commend the mayor for his leadership in the council, because this last, the current year that we're in, we now have a balanced budget that did not use any reserves, which is a major undertaking for any city in this day and age, so I wanna give the mayor a round of applause and a council praise for that. So with that as a background, let's get started, and I'll tell you what the mayor's asked me to talk about, and that is the Crenshaw Light Rail Project. This is a seven, one point seven billion dollar project, is currently underway right now. You can't see the work, they're doing a lot of underground utility work, but we're fortunate, we're gonna have two stations in the city of Inglewood. The length of the entire line is about eight point five miles, but what you may not know is that these stations, a lot of cities want stations in their city, because they're like an economic hub, you know? Once there's a station, you know, businesses start popping up all around the stations, even housing. So we're looking to take advantage of that Crenshaw Light Rail Project, which will be scheduled, which is scheduled to open in two thousand eighteen. There's a lot of interest, and this is where I gotta put my glasses on, hold on a second. Written notes, and I'm old. There's a lot of interest to revive and repurpose the Fox Theater, many of you are probably in your, you know, if you've been here for many years, have maybe gone to see a movie theater, a movie there. But it's a very beautiful and ornate building, and in fact, this past year, it got placed on the National Registry for the State of California. You know, even though the paint's peeling and, you know, there's just not much going on there anymore, the doors are closed, you know, the, the grand marquee reminds people who remember the day that, you know, this was a place that people were proud of at one time, and you'd share time with your families, and I can tell you now that with all this stuff going on in the city of Inglewood, you know, theater operators and developers are now contacting us and saying, "Look, we wanna reopen that." So we're really excited about that being a catalyst project in our downtown area. We also have the D3 site, which we call it, it's a site located at Market, I mean, I'm sorry, at Florence and La Brea. It's at the southeast corner, and this project, it's been, this site, I should say, has been empty for about twenty years, and if you guys, if you've been here long enough, you remember that there used to be a Cadillac dealership there, and in fact, Councilor Morales gave me a number of, someone who said that they were told that there was an old historic post office even before then, so they wanted to go digging for bricks to pull together. So I said, "Have that, Ed, you can go out there anytime you want." But it's interesting, people are, people are coming back, and the one thing about that D3 site is that we've received three grants to do community visioning. We've had three visioning meetings so far, hopefully you participated in those. It'll be going to the planning commission within the thirty days, and in another few weeks after that, it'll go to council. So you'll have still, if you haven't gone to any of the visioning workshops, you'll still have several more opportunities to give your input in terms of what that would look, that property should look like. And although it's set fallow for twenty years, and there've been a number of developers who've come and presented, I mean, ideas for that project, for that site, I think the city of Inglewood has benefited from the time, from time at this point, because now with the station there, we have an opportunity to develop what we call transit-oriented mixed-use development, and that is a project that will take advantage of the stations that are across the street, but also an opportunity to create market-rate housing, and also business, office space, and retail. So it'll be a very dynamic catalyst project for, I mean, for bringing people back to the downtown area. Okay, okay, and my last, my last slide is that Inglewood is strategically located in the South Bay. We are minutes from downtown, and we're minutes from the beach, we're right there, right there in the middle of the, you know, this Southern California region, and we have two major freeways that, you know, the 105 and the 405, and millions of people come through the city in order to get to the airport or to leave the airport. So we've become a major marketing, marketing location for product placement. And at this point, as I said up there, I didn't know this whenever I drove by Los Yenega and the 405 and saw those big, huge signs up there, that that was in the city of Inglewood before I came to work here, but those signs are generating millions of dollars for the city, and it's because of our location in the city of Inglewood and in the South Bay. And in fact, I just got a call from Councilor Franklin, there's also another company that wants, has identified a site in Inglewood where they wanna do this. So these signs are going to be creating the revenue that we need to hire more police officers, to put, to clean up the streets quicker, and to do the things and provide the services that you want, so be proud whenever you drive by that, those marketing signs, because they're doing a lot for the city of Inglewood. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak.
When you started, I couldn't get him to talk, now I can't shut him up. You know, again, this is another example of how we have people with finance, with money, that actually believe more in the city than some people on our council. I'm gonna tell you, the indications are growing every day that people believe that Inglewood is a place of the future. Now, you're not gonna put up graphics like that in a city that you don't believe has great visibility and a good profile. We really see this as an opportunity, perhaps, for the Fairview and Los Yenega Thrifty Gas Site, if we can change our ordinances, to put up a super graphics there that will face Los Yenega, and the good thing for those that live in the Heights of Ladera, the new LEDs are so low light emitting- low light emitting that they won't even, light pollute any of our neighborhoods. So I look forward to that as a potential opportunity. We're very fortunate that, to have someone here that has represented our city for quite some time and is a tireless advocate for us. And that's Assemblyman Steve Bradford. And I'd like to have him come up and give him a few minutes.
It's truly an honor to be here and join the mayor and the council and just briefly talk to the community. I am so happy to represent Inglewood in the state legislature, because what I've seen over the last two years is nothing but progress. It's nothing but pride. We, Inglewood's a topic of discussion in Sacramento. It's a topic of discussion because of the challenges it's overcoming despite this legislative body ending redevelopment. What you just heard, Arnie, describe as the potential for the new forum, the city's doing that without redevelopment land. Because we ended redevelopment two years ago. We took a vote because the governor said redevelopment's bad, we need to reform it. We wind up ending it and killing it. But despite that, the city is moving forward. It's moving forward because of the leadership of this mayor, leadership of the members of this council, and the staff that are visionaries, that are going to move Inglewood back to the top. I say, it's not a comeback, they never left. This city was once known as the city of champions, and it's going to be known that, as that again. When you talk about concerts, the Forum is still at the top of the list. It's probably not a single person in this room who hasn't seen a concert at some point in their life at the Forum. I was just down at LA Live, a great venue, but the acoustics has never matched that what we have at the Forum. So I assure you, don't let anybody believe that they won't come back to the Forum. Prince would not have done 20 Days Here two years ago if the acoustics wasn't good there. All right? He wouldn't have done 20 Days there. So the Forum has great potential. I know we have some challenges with the racetrack and where it's going and the casino, but again, through the leadership of this council, we're moving through. They're going to address those issues. And we're carrying a bill. I'm a principal co-author along with Senator Rod Wright, in helping the Forum move forward. It's a Tidehouse bill that deals with how you can market and sell alcohol. So we're, we're addressing that, because they need our help in order for this project to move forward. So I'm excited to be a part of Inglewood, representing Inglewood. The future's bright under the leadership of this mayor. But I commend all of you for being here today, because on Saturday, you could have been anywhere else. And you're here today because you're committed to the city of Inglewood. Yesterday, I sat on a panel on the Affordable Care Act, and then I'm going to shut up. Everyone needs to know where we're going for the ACA, the Affordable Care Act. By October, the, the exchange is going to be up and running, and folks without insurance kind of need insurance. But one of the things I challenge in the governor and his staff and my legislative friends is that it's one thing to have insurance, it's another thing to have access to healthcare. We've lost Daniel Freeman. We've downsized Cintinella. We've lost RFK. Supervisor Mark Really Thomas is working to open back up MLK. But it's one thing to have insurance, another thing to have access. So we less, we have to make sure that those health facilities remain in our community so each and every one of you can be served. So if you have any questions, Darren Harris in my office is available, and I thank the mayor for his, this opportunity. Thank you, Mayor.
You know, when you came in, you know, we, we're, got a lot, we're about halfway through, but probably some of the most important stuff is, no, the most important stuff is yet to come. When you came in, you received a card like this for questions. And I don't know how much time we'll have left at the end, but we do want to take the questions that have consensus and address them. And if, if anybody want to make comments, if you want to do that, put that on your card as well, and we'll see if we can get three or four people's comments in. But we're going to try and get you as much information as little time as possible. Okay? Everybody knows, but has heard very little about the state takeover of the Inglewood Unified School District. The state is in charge. They've appointed an interim superintendent. Her name is Latonya Kirk Carter, not Patrick, Carter. And she's here to share with us some basics. Why it happened, how long the state intends to lead the schools, and then what the future holds. She's going to do all that in five minutes. Ms. Carter, please.
We actually have nicknames. I call him Big Brother Mayor, and he calls me Little Sis Soup, because I call on him quite often. Good morning. My, as, as you introduced, I'm Latonya Kirk Carter. I'm not accustomed to speaking publicly in front of a large audience. I'm, I'm by nature, by trade, a business manager. I've been an assistant superintendent of business for 26 years in schools. But I started my career in Inglewood. I started from right out of college in 1987 as a school business manager for the Inglewood Unified School District. So I have come full circle when Sacramento called me in October and asked if I was interested in taking the position of business manager once the state took over. The original state administrator and I were hired independently by Sacramento, but we worked hand-in-hand initially. And that is why I believe they felt comfortable handing the reins over to me interminally while they searched for a permanent state administrator. The district is, and we have a lot of commonalities. The district has a structural deficit right now of $16 million in the current year. We are spending $16 million more than we have coming in in revenue, which is, you won't, I won't sugarcoat that. That's a huge problem. It's an enormous problem. The state takeover loan of $55 million is, is for cash flow. We've already taken from that loan 29 million. There's 26 million more to come. The payoff period for the loan is 20 years. Typically, when the district goes into state receivership, and there's only unfortunately, and I, we hate to be part of it, but I think our future will be bright as I go further on in my, my four more minutes, that typically when, there's only nine districts that have gone under, but typically, the time to come out of receivership and the board restore to local control is between seven and 12 years. And I, I worked at, I consulted at El Camino Compton, Compton College, now taken over by El Camino. They're about 15 years now, I think, into their state takeover. To restore local control, the loan has to be three fourths paid off, 55 million. It's a 25, it's a 20-year loan, but if you can pay it back sooner, you can. You also have to meet the measurements of efficiencies that the state has set out for us in, in the areas of pupil achievement, governance, facilities, and human resources. And it's a lengthy process to get back to local control. We have a big job ahead of us. Right now, and I, I think I've been in the paper the last week because we had to close our adult school in its present form. We will continue to give adult education in the career technical areas. And we will actually change that facility from the Inglewood Adult School to the Inglewood Career Technical Education Facility, where we will actually be doing vocational classes for adults and our own high school students. We have transformed how we deliver our early childhood education, which is the last piece that I actually had to work on this week. We're going to, we're going to have what they call transitional kindergarten for four-year-olds at all of our schools. So instead of it being in one location, we'll have early childhood education around our entire district. The, the main reason that the district is, was, is physically insolvent is a loss of ADA, a loss of children. And we have to restore confidence in the residents to bring their, our children, their children back to the district. We have to, as I tell my staff all the time, we have to have a product that people want to buy. And then they're not going to buy our product when they can answer with their feet and go to another school. When I was here in 1987, I left here in 1991, the ADA was, or the enrollment was kissing 20,000 students, so 19,000 and some change. We're right now at 11,500. We have the same number of facilities, there's aging facilities, not the same number of kids, but we have a lot of expenditures that, that, that we can't, that we can't afford, that we have to grow our product. I am really thankful to the residents for the general obligation bond that was, that was on the ballot when I, I got here. I've paired that with the renewed relationship that we have with Lawa, the 118 million that we'll be getting from them, the 15 million that we're getting from Hollywood Park. And then the, the, the good thing about being in state receivership is that my boss is the state superintendent, Tom Prolixon. And so I expect additional monies to be allocated to Inglewood for facilities with the state bond in 2014. So within a short order, we will have an over $300 million facility transformation plan, program. The money is there, and we're going to be spending it. You'll see some, we want to be part of the bright future of Inglewood. One of the first areas that we want to look at is transforming Inglewood High. And it be a pearl that people drive past on their way to Madison Square Gardens and the, and the Hollywood Park property. In conclusion, we have a, I won't sugarcoat it. We have a long road ahead of us. We have to get into negotiations with our labor unions. We have no cuts in place going into the new school year. So that 16 million more that I'm, that 16 million dollar structural deficit that I have in the current year is going forth into the new year. $32 million upside down. I've eaten, we've eaten away at the state loan. And we won't exist if we don't, I, I, my, my mantra is that we all have to invest in the problem for us to be successful. In conclusion... Did I say conclusion? Am I about to conclude? I was going to say that I'm here, I live here, my daughter goes to school here, she goes to City Honors, and I am exactly where I'm supposed to be. The last time I was here in this, this building was in June, my brother was murdered, and his funeral was here. I moved back to Inglewood in June. They didn't call me for, I didn't even know the school district was in trouble. I found the school for my daughter in Inglewood in August. I was working my other job. I came here from Beverly Hills School District. And in October, when they called me, I said, "Well, Lord, I guess this was this all about. I'm supposed to be here." So I am blessed and honored to do this hard work, to restore this district to what I know it used to be in 1987. And so, Big Brother Mayor.
Now, one of the first things that Latonya's going to do is institute that time management But it was time well spent, because you know, I think the state took over us probably six months ago, and we haven't heard a word. And so, I wanted to make sure that you got some clarity on what's going on. And here's another thing that I learned, I worked in three cities. And what I've found is this, that one, the schools are intertwined with the psyche of a community. And then in communities where there's a good corporate, strong corporate presence, there's philanthropy that comes to the schools. And that's another reason selfishly for us to encourage, invite, cajole, entice big business to come to our community. Because with big business comes cars and people, with cars and people come dollars. With, from dollars bring sales tax and revenues, and those are translated into city services. So let's not forget that. And that's what I've learned in some total of my experience, working for three different cities and Inglewood for twice. This is something that we must do and that we can do. And we're blessed to have our geography, be situated between four freeways, be a mile from the airport, and have ocean breezes for our climate. Let's leverage that, and let's believe in ourselves. Next, what you really came here for is to hear about those streets. And I'm going to introduce a young man, and I can call people young man now, because I'm no longer a young man, but he reminds me so much of myself and my career. He was a number two person where it came from, and he's far and away a number one. He was recently approached by the city of Beverly Hills to become their public works director. Very sharp young man. And, and he's done such good work in a short time here. Our staff here was great. We had great persons in interim, but the two of them together, they're such a team. So I want to introduce Louis Atwell, Director of Public Works.
Thank you very much, Mayor, for the warm words. I can't tell you how fortunate I am to be here, working in the city of Inglewood. This, to me, is a dream come true, to be quite honest with you. And to be before the people that I actually work for. I spent, I've been in public works for about 22 years, either on the private side or on the public side. I too worked for a couple other cities. And I worked for another state at one time. And it is an absolute pleasure being in public works, because the one thing about public works is we work for everyone. We work for the people that reside in the city, the businesses, the people that drive through the city, because they may use our roadways. And I also work for the employees of the city, because I also repair their facilities, their, the buildings, the police cars. We pretty much try and do it all, so I have lots of people that I work for. I'm here today, this afternoon, to talk about the CIP projects. There are many CIP projects that we have to put in place. CIP means capital improvement projects. And our CIP projects originate from essentially two different divisions. One of them is the water division, and then the other one is the Streets and Transportation There is a project that we plan on constructing, beginning construction within, oh, okay, clicker, thank you. The La Brea Avenue Phase Two Project is a major, much-needed project. Anybody who drives on La Brea Avenue coming from the south, from either Hawthorne or heading south towards, out of the city, La Brea is a mess. It has many potholes, and it needs lots of work. We will begin construction on this project within the next couple of months, and it's a little over a mile, and it originates at 104th and moves its way north to Hillcrest. And it's a costly project, it's about $5 million, but almost all of that money is grant money or some bond money, but primarily grant money, no general fund money. So that is a much-needed project. Another project is, I don't know how this, I thought it was a different project, but the Van Ness Project is a project in conjunction with the county. The county is responsible for the eastern portion of Van Ness Avenue. The city of Inglewood is in charge and owns the west side of Van Ness. So in conjunction with the county, we'll be improving a mile of the Van Ness Avenue from Century Boulevard to Imperial Highway. And this project is slated to begin construction in the summer. And that includes street resurfacing and some sidewalks being repaired. There's the Century Boulevard project. This is the, one of the largest projects that will be built in this city for a while, and also for the future, but hopefully not, hopefully we can do some bigger, better things. This project starts from Van Ness from the east and heads west all the way to the 405 freeway. It is a complete reconstruction project. I worked for, I worked in Nevada for Las Vegas, and I built some things out in the middle of the desert. And it's easy to build a roadway or a pipeline out in the middle of the desert. This project is like a brand-new roadway, parkway, parkways includes the sidewalks. This is a brand-new project, a brand-new roadway, and it is going to be beautiful. And I'm very proud to be a part of it. It's been in the workings for a while, but the pavement's going to hit, we're going to hit the pavement here very soon. It's a very expensive project because of the number of aspects to it. It includes ADA improvements, which is the Americans with Disabilities Act. So people will be able to actually use... So people will be able to actually use the sidewalk and use it safely. So I'm very proud of this project, and hopefully it happens very soon. There may be some issues with the state, but we're trying to work through them as far as funding goes. Imperial Highway is a similar project to Van Ness. And it's a project that we're working with the county on. It's a $4 million project, it's about a mile and a half worth of work. And it begins at Van Ness and heads all the way to Prairie. And again, we're responsible, the City of Inglewood is responsible for the north side, and the county's responsible for the south side. But to keep it uniform, we're gonna do the whole roadway, and the county's taking the lead on it. We also take care of the traffic signals. We have a traffic signal improvement project with the money that's in the traffic signal improvements project. One of them is a very critical project, and we brought it out to show it on its own because it provides dedicated left-hand turn lanes, which means they have their own protective signals. So it's definitely a safety improvement. We're also putting in LED traffic lights, traffic signal lights, to conserve energy. Because the one thing about traffic signals, they're on 24 hours a day. So they consume a lot of energy, and they're very expensive. So the LED, also the LED's a little bit brighter, it looks a little nicer. So that's one project that we're very proud of, and there will be several like this. Because I couldn't go over the whole capital improvement program, or I'd get the hook. I don't want the hook. And then we have a couple other ones I'll go over briefly. One of them is the annual sidewalk replacement project and the resurfacing of local streets. Both of these projects are what I call miscellaneous, but they're actual annual projects. We combined several different funding sources to create one project. That way we get better prices for what we're doing. So this project and the previous one are, they're really two or three projects combined. And they're to upgrade our sidewalks and also resurface our streets. And they're actually fairly large. The annual sidewalk one is almost $400,000, and the resurfacing is about $1.3 million. And they're spread out throughout the city. This picture, and I don't know how they got by the car, I wasn't here when that happened. But this picture is the final coat that they put on a resurfaced street. It's a slurry ceiling, so it keeps the street preserved, and so water can't get in there and damage it. That's how we get the potholes. As far as groundwater goes, groundwater is a very, very important component to the city. The city I came from, they were all groundwater. And their costs, their water costs were much lower than what we have here. The unfortunate part about the City of Inglewood is that we import the majority of our water. And water rates, and I hate to say this, but I'm gonna be honest, water rates from water coming down from Northern California are probably gonna double over the next 10 years because of the energy cost, the consumption, and they're also building a bypass. So it's important that we take advantage of our local groundwater. And, you know, I'm committed to water, I was in 20 years in water. And so I'm gonna see what I can do. So we're looking at actually two wells, this is one of them. But I would like to design two wells together so we get better prices and also construct two wells over the next few years. Because if we can do that, then we can stem some of the costs with imported water. And also if an earthquake hits up north and we lose our Northern California water supply, we have a local water supply to take advantage of. So that's one of the other things that we're trying to do. We can't replace the entire system because we don't have the water rights for that. And then we're doing some other things, because what is the water that comes out of the ground? Any good if it can't go through our pipes? So we're doing a major pipeline replacement program that's coming out of the water rate increase. We're gonna spend $2 million over the next year and a half, two years. And I told the people that work for me, we need to focus on replacing our pipelines. We can't just sit back and, you know, do what they've done in the past. We're gonna do a lot more, because I believe in doing things. I left LA Water and Power, I worked for DWP for five years. Nobody leaves DWP. And if anybody hears from DWP, I'm sorry, but they played a lot of video games, and I did not do that. I left. So nobody leaves there, they pay very well, thank you. I'd probably be making more money over there, though. Just a couple things that we do, we're replacing some valves. Because when a pipeline breaks or we need to do any repairs, we have to shut the valves. If we can't shut the valves, then we lose our precious resource. And so we're putting in new valves. And this is what an older pipeline looks like because of the corrosion, and we lose water pressure. And when we go to fight fires, we can't get the water pressure. So this is what we're trying to do, is put in the new ductile iron pipes. Is the hook coming? Okay, okay. And then what can we do without our sewers? We gotta put more into our sewers. So we're doing sewer relining, which is where we go into the sewer line without excavating, and we actually put in a plastic liner, which also provides a structural rigid section. That's an engineering target. And we're also doing sewer spot repairs as well. So we videoed our entire system, and so we know where the problems are. And now it's a matter of just going in and putting in these repairs. And then, of course, we have our annual storm drain system improvements. And those include, I don't know if you've seen catch basins where they have the screens in front of them? Well, we're doing those, and we're putting screens inside of them as well. So when trash and debris enter our catch basins, they don't go to our rivers, like the Dominguez Channel or the Byuna Creek. So those are the things that we're working on. It is very, very costly, though. If you go green, you gotta go green on the money side, too, unfortunately. So anyway, with that, it's a pleasure being here, and again, I'm very, very excited, so thank you.
I want to go back to that water pipe for a second. Now, I'm sure all of you remember the Prop 215 hearing on the water rates. So we need to revisit that for one second. We hadn't had a raise in water rates since 2003. The city was burning through the money that was allocated for capital improvements just to make water purchases. We supply enough water for about 50% of our 15,000 households that we supply water to in the Inglewood Water Department. And we had come to the point where we were not going to be able to make our June water purchase, which was about $1 million. And so we had to inform the public and let you know that we had to finally increase water fees. It's not a tax, it's to pay for what you get. And then we had council members that went around and said, "You're being taxed too much, and the council majority wants to tax you," and protested and fought it. And let me tell you what would have happened if we had not had that fee increase. Wouldn't have been able to pay our water bill for June. You know what a council member told me? "Well, so what? They'll give us the water anyway." Do you know what would happen to your credit rating as a city, your bond rating, if you skip payments on water? It would be cataclysmic. So you have to have people that are gonna do the tough things and tell you what you need to know. One more thing about Louis. He's here because he believes that we will be something greater than what we are, and he wants to be part of that resurgence, and I want to give him a big hand for that. I have a member of that dreaded council majority here, Councilman Eloy Morales, who has been on the council for quite some time. And he's someone that invests a lot of time and thought and careful deliberation in helping to move the city forward. And I want to welcome Eloy.
Thank you, guys, and I apologize, first of all, for my attire. I had a couple of community events out there, and this is, believe it or not, how we dress for them when it's on a baseball field or in a backyard. But, you know, this, I won't take too much time, I know there's a calendar out there. First, I want to thank the mayor for putting this together. You know, it's not about having a town hall meeting where you bring a lot of people together and you talk about yourself and what needs to be done all of a sudden, starting from that point forward. We're having a town hall meeting today based on some decisions that have been made in the past couple of years that are moving the city forward. Because moving the city forward takes commitment, it takes people who are willing to take criticism on a daily basis, and it takes that courage of bringing the right people together to move this stuff forward. So you saw Century Boulevard, you heard about, I'm sure, MSG if you haven't already. But he also spoke about the water hikes, which were extremely difficult to do. When the economy is low, your residents are telling you, "I can't handle it, I can't handle it." And you have to make those very difficult decisions to move projects forward and move the city forward to improve. You cannot do that without leadership. You know, and I want to take a moment to thank the mayor for taking those steps and saying, "Hey, Eloy, what do you think? Eloy, you know, this is something, you gotta do it. You gotta think about it, here's the information, this and that, I bring up my questions, we work it out, this is what happens." But aside from that, you know, a couple of years ago, when he came on board, it was about bringing in the right people. Artie was the right city manager to bring, Louis came in. We got Mr. David Esparzo, who made it extremely difficult for us to bring him, but he's here. And we have the chief in place. So the truth is, the team is starting to come together. And when the team is complete, we will continue to move the city forward. We will continue to bring the projects that are gonna change this city. You know, there's not a lot of cities out there in our position that are having the opportunities we have to bring in an MSG into the city right next door to a Hollywood Park. We are the only city in the country with that opportunity. We're either gonna turn away from it, or we're gonna go headfirst and do everything we have to do to make them succeed. So Mayor Buzz, thank you for letting me speak here. But the truth is that, you know, the work is on a daily basis, and it's for the City of Inglewood. So thank you very much, Mayor Buzz.
Sorry, Eloy, stuck to the five minutes. Now, I'm gonna do a little bit of aside again. Gerard McCallum, myself, Melissa from MSG, Mark Little from Faithful Central, we're on a panel at the West Side Urban Planning Group. Okay, that's it, group that meets at the Century, the Olympic Collection in, I think it's Beverly Hills. It might be, I think it's Beverly Hills. But anyway, they are, that's the who's who of development and planners for the West Side. They invited us because, you know why? Because they said, "We want to hear about the amazing things that you guys are doing in Inglewood." And so we were the panel, and I was very proud of that. Now, I'm gonna introduce somebody now that I've known for a long time, over 30, oh, over 30 years. And, no, about 30 years, because he's younger than I am. And I was his first sergeant when he came out of the academy. He's risen to the ranks of the Inglewood Police Department and was recently selected after seven months as an interim as our Chief of Police. Now, I gotta tell you something, you know, I don't take it the wrong way. When I went to Santa Monica and they hired me, and they'd never had a supervisor above the rank of sergeant that was of color, people in town said, "Boy, they must really be serious, they had a black guy to be the chief." Well, we must really be serious in Inglewood, because three of the last four department heads we fired here are white guys, so. So we're really serious, too. But I would be remiss if, while I'm talking about the quality of our staff, if I didn't mention Michael Faco, he's our assistant, he's an assistant city manager, and he's in the back. Please stand up, Michael. Now, Michael likely won't be talking today, but I want to say this about him. Between he and Mark Weinberg, former city manager, they kept this city afloat. Without those two individuals, we would not be standing here today talking about a bright future. We would have been a receivership. So I want to tell you, Michael, we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
And so Chief Ranarata, and I love seeing that, Chief Ranarata, will give us a few minutes. And see, he's a police type, so he'll stick to his five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. Or maybe good afternoon now. I do, I want to acknowledge some of my staff members here. I know Captain DiMonato is here, and she ran up with Councilman Morales to throw out that first pitch up there at the North Little League baseball team. Did you throw a strike? You know, I'm really excited, and recently being appointed as the Chief of Police on January 23rd of this year, I'm deeply honored and humbled to obtain this position. I've been with this department and this city for 31 years, and I do consider this my home. And I'm committed to. You know, I'm very excited with all of the optimism, and I'm an optimistic person. And my responsibility, along with the men and women of the Inglewood Police Department, is in my vision, along with where this city is heading, and I truly believe that, that this is an exciting time for this city, and I see us on the precipice of breaking out into a whole new level. And I truly believe this is, this will completely look like a different city in the next three to five years. And I'm thoroughly convinced that, and I'm committed to that. And the men and women of the Inglewood Police Department are committed to that. And what I mean by that is, my vision is to bring you, along with the men and women of this department, the most professional police department in California. And those are not easy words to say, because that takes work. And much like these gentlemen that are here that have come on this elite board, the mayor and the leadership we now have have put together, I'm very confident that we will deliver on that promise. And it's like a good business plan, you know, it's gonna take a few years, and we gotta iron out some things and stuff like that. And I am committed to that, and my staff is committed to that. And I'm putting the infrastructure in place right now, a lot of the things like the Public Works, what Director was talking about, that you don't see, but that must be done so that we can support this community, the citizens that will come into this community and our parks, that I know that they're very dear to Mr. Agee, and he's very committed to those parks, and I commend him for that. To make these a place where people want to come with, and we will treat all of our residents, visitors alike, with dignity and respect. And that's where we will be, and that's where we're going. And my office is always open to anybody who wants to call me. So I want to get into a few technical points here, so I stay on timelines, because I know the mayor. And the mayor has been certainly my mentor, as he mentioned. He was my first supervisor way back when, I don't even want to say the year that was, but it was in the early 80s. If you're picking up a little bit of accent, I'm originally from Boston, but I do consider this my home. And he has been a great mentor to me. And I know together, with the team that he's assembling, and the council, we will be successful. I'm very confident of that. And, you know, since the mayor took office, I have the clicker. Of course, it's gotta be click-proof, right? Yeah, since the mayor took office and under his leadership, and he's given me a lot of support and inspiration. You know, violent crime homicides have been down in comparison from 2011 to 2012, 30 to 35%. That's a staggering number, so I think that's commendable for the men and women, and certainly the citizens, because you are the eyes and ears for us out there, compared to our 2010 stats. But let me always say this, that one crime is one too many crimes. And we certainly have heavy hearts for all the victims out there. And my commitment as well is to drive down crime and the fear of crime. So what we have coming up here in place is what's called a gang injunction, because we are committed, and the mayor's been a big supporter of this, as well as the council, to driving down our gang issue and crippling gangs. And a gang injunction is simply a civil order, and it's like a stay-away order. So it's, if you understand civil and criminal, that's what a gang injunction is. So it's, uh, if you understand civil and criminal, that's what a gang injunction is. And the, uh, don't, you know, so in other words, gang members don't association with public, and prevents more gang violence. And statistically, gang injunctions have shown to drive down crime thirty-plus percent. Uh, the California Supreme Court, and this, I'm gonna go a little bit off here, but they've recognized that victims have rights. I mean, you have a right to go out into your parks, to walk down the street, to go to the store, and not be intimidated or be in fear. And that's why we will deal with the fear of crime, because of quality of life issues. That is a major component of what I'm putting together as we move forward with this department. You know, as a First Amendment right, uh, you certainly have a right to have family, make family decisions and live and marry who you want, but you don't have a right to hang out on street corners and intimidate people. That's not a right. Gang injunctions are very important, because it helps our youth to dissuade them from becoming involved in gangs, and gives them what I call options and opportunities to do other things. Because if the gangs are running rampant out there and controlling the streets, the young ones on their way to school, or going to the parks to play, or what have you, are intimidated. And that's simply not right. You know, in, uh, in Proverbs, uh, chapter one, verse fifteen, "Walk though not in the way with them, refrain thou feet from their path." So we have to provide those opportunities, uh, and give them the chance to have a good life. And I and the men and women of this department are certainly deeply committed to that. And this gang injunction is gonna have a big impact on that. As I said, it's a viable and effective tool in reducing crime and the fear of crime. And I emphasize the fear of crime, 'cause quality of life issues are very, very important to us. And I wanted to emphasize again, under the mayor's leadership, um, that, again, we've had a thirty to thirty-five percent reduction in homicides from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven, and that is something to applaud. Thank you.
Police chief, he preaches. He raps, too. Um, you know, we're gonna hurry along, because we have a special guest here, and I really appreciate him being here, and so, Michael, I promise you, we're getting along. Our next speaker is our new Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. David Asparza. Let me tell you a little bit about this gentleman, you know. Usually, I'm the one with the big resume, but, uh, he's worked for the city of San Francisco, I believe, as the Chief Financial Officer. He worked for Willie Brown. He's worked for the city of Los Angeles in charge of the Housing Department, which was a billion-dollar entity. And when we were interviewing here, uh, he had two offers to other places that paid more money. And, uh, we raised our pay to be competitive, not to surpass, but to be competitive. And he, like Louis, believed in what my vision was, where we wanted to go as a city, and he wanted to be part of it, and I applaud him for that. You can see from the people that talk and from Michael Falco, that the city's being led by professionals now. Not with a lot of happy talk, but serious talk, with serious plans and concrete plans. So with that, I want to introduce Mr. David Asparza.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for that introduction. Uh, I wanted to start off, you know, with just, uh, a quote. You know, back in nineteen eighty-three, when Steve Jobs, who was the president and CEO of Apple Corporation, was, uh, trying to recruit John Sculley from Pepsi Company, he made a quote that has kind of lived in the business world for many, many years. And that, and the quote is, "Do you want to sell sugared water for the rest of your life, or do you want to come with me and change the world?" Back in September of last year, I was packing up my house and getting ready to move back to the Bay Area, when I received a phone call from the mayor. And the mayor pretty much asked me to do the same thing. He said, "Do you want to go back to the Bay Area and some mundane job, or do you want to come with me and join my team and change the city of Inglewood?" And, uh, as you can see, I took that, and I've been, you know, very, very happy with my choice ever since. So, uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I do want to join your team, and I do think we have the opportunity to, you know, change significantly the city of Inglewood. So let me get very quickly to the point, and that is, when you talk to your resident bean counter, then you just want to get to the, you know, the facts, and then get on with it, and so I will not, I don't have many, uh, you know, pictures to show, but I do have some slides here. So some key economic indicators that we look at here for the city are these. And they, and you may have seen this in other presentations in the past, and that's the reason why I used it again for this one. And all of those indicators show that, you know, things are now starting to mend and rebound within the city of Inglewood. The first arrow there, uh, property taxes, as, you know, uh, Ms. Brass had indicated earlier, you know, they're starting to rebound, and so we're seeing an increase in property taxes. And, uh, so overall, we're looking at a, about a one percent increase in property taxes this year. Sales taxes are already also up, and that is, they're up six percent over the last five quarters, indicating that there's more confidence in the economy and people's jobs. And so, once that happens, people start to go out and spend money and start to refurbish their homes and, you know, buy cars and whatever else. Uh, we're seeing a modest increase in building permits. Again, people only do this, they start these projects when they start to feel comfortable with their jobs and the economy. Utility user taxes, uh, those are, right now, remaining about stable. Uh, we see an increase in water and a decrease in telecom, which is the franchise fees that, you know, get charged to Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T. Uh, also, we're seeing an increase in the hotel tax, which is the transit occupancy tax. Uh, again, indicating that more people are staying, you know, stopping here to, you know, rent hotel rooms, and then we derive the tax charge on those rooms. Uh, Hollywood Park is stable, but of course, we knew that, because that whole program or development is going through a transition, but we're, you know, we have the ability to stabilize the taxes on that. Unemployment is good, because it's going down. And this is both in the LA region and then in the city itself, and so another good indicator that, you know, the city is on the mend, and we probably have, are starting to rebound out of the recession at its deepest point. City expenditures are also down. I mean, they're under budget, and I will show you that in the next one here, actually after this one. Um, just so that you understand what we're dealing with, though, in the, when the budget was adopted and passed last fall and started October one, the city had a shortfall of four point three million dollars, all right? However, it also, the budget also contained a strategy by which to address it. Now, when we talk about, you know, a structural shortfall or deficit, you know, that's if you don't, you know, have any strategies. The city absolutely had a strategy, and that is that the strategy was to, uh, have a workforce reduction plan, which, you know, for city employees, that was a furlough. Uh, the city is closed, the city business is closed every Friday. And so that ten percent has allowed us to bridge a portion of that shortfall. Freezing vacant positions, uh, netted the city one point three million dollars. So we are trying to be very mindful of our costs, you know, both the immediate and ongoing. Revenues from fee increases, uh, we expected to receive about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I will tell you that we will fall short of that in this year. And then administrative efficiencies, we should derive about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional savings for that. And I can say that we definitely are on point for that. Um, some of the good indicators here is that the revenues collected from October through December, because this is the first quarter of our fiscal year. Uh, utility taxes are up a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, or five percent. Sales taxes are up two hundred and thirty-three thousand, or nineteen percent. Property taxes up one point four, or twenty-eight percent. Now, also, there's a two point five million dollars in parentheses there, which is revenue that the city will start to, uh, gain as a result of the demise of the Redevelopment Agency. So that, those property taxes that were being, uh, kept in the Redevelopment Agency will now start flowing to the city, and that will actually give us a bump of about two point five million dollars. Other local taxes are up sixty-nine thousand, or three percent. So, and again, I want to, uh, make sure that everybody knows that these figures are based on actual receipts and do not account for cyclical or seasonal, because, you know, as many people will know, you know, we get our sales tax revenues from the state in March, and so we're looking for another bump there. Uh, property taxes are divided between December and March as well, so, you know, we haven't received all our property taxes, but, you know, again, all the indicators are very positive. Uh, this kind of gives you an idea of our revenues, and you can see right here that our revenues are tracking just below the budgeted amounts, you know, for the fiscal year. And this is good, because, again, we know that we're gonna get some, a good bump, you know, when we get the sales tax and we get the other part of our property taxes from the state. So we're expecting that, you know, this trend line on the bottom here will start to get closer and closer to the actual budgeted amounts. Same thing with our expenditures, which is, you can see that the trend line on this one is significantly below, and if we project it out, you know, through the rest of the year, you know, it will, you know, provide additional savings, and that's what this gap is here. When that, when it's a gap, it's savings, and it goes above this trend line, you know, it becomes, you know, we're spending more than we have. And so, you know, with the mayor and council and Mr. Field's direction, you know, the city is being very prudent in its expenditures and maintaining its budget very well. So, but again, as we go through the year, you know, especially when we get into some of the seasonal programs, you know, we would expect this line to start coming in line with the trend line for the full year itself. All right, so, uh, first quarter expenditures, uh, police and fire expenditure services are down eight hundred and sixty thousand, or six point eight percent. Economic and community development is down thirty-one thousand, or five point six percent. Parks, recreation, libraries are up, sixty-nine thousand, or five point seven percent. And public works is up ninety-one thousand, or six point three percent. And so, you know, overall, you know, the general fund expenditures are down three percent at this particular point. Property tax transfer. Now, this is, this is an issue in which we are trying to explore at the administrative level, because, again, if we're gonna start to resolve many of the funding issues for the city of Inglewood, we're gonna have to start thinking about other ways of acquiring funds that could be spent for general obligations, such as your, you know, police, fire services, parks, streets, and what have you. And so, uh, this one is being explored, uh, as I said, because, and I need to make sure that everybody's aware of it, this property transfer tax, you know, always has somewhat of a dubious title to it. And people, you know, will think, "Well, you know, why do I want to vote for an increase in my property taxes?" But this is, this is not on the property tax itself. This is in the transfer of the property. So when the, uh, title gets transferred from the seller to the buyer, then that has to, uh, you know, that county fee and local fee, because right now, we split it fifty-fifty with the, with LA County, uh, gets split, and then, you know, the city gets half of that. So, uh, but it's a, it's a, it's really a tax on the transfer of the title. And so it's not something that the property owners would see, you know, on their, uh, advallarium, uh, tax, you know, bill every year. Likewise, once the seller pays it the first time, they don't, or not the seller, I'm sorry, the buyer pays it the first time, they don't pay it again. And so it is, just so that we understand, the transfer of that title. Um, you know, the city of Inglewood's property transfer tax has never been adjusted before, so it still maintains the rate of fifty-five cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. And that's been, you know, that way for, you know, for many, 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 many years, when I started looking at this. Um, and also here, you know, this is the, uh, transfer tax has to go to the voters, all right? This is not something that the council, the mayor, you know, or city administration can just do without the voters' acknowledgement and acceptance and approval of it, you know, by the voters. Okay, and to give you an idea is, if this, uh, increase, you know, from fifty-five cents up to four dollars per thousand, and again, that's a one-time transfer fee tax, there would have been an additional one million dollars just on the sale of the form. Just on the sale of the form, the city would have derived. And based upon last year's property tax transfers, the city would have derived one point one million dollars in, you know, just regular transition. And so as we start to talk about these developments, Hollywood Park particularly, when we're, you know, discuss the number of residents that will be coming online, this will make a significant impact to the city of Inglewood. And so I, you know, it's still, uh, there's a lot of discussion that needs to be had on this, and the mayor will talk a little bit about this himself. But, you know, my point is that this is not an addition to your property taxes. It's only on the transfer of that title at the time of sale, so. Uh, with that, that is the, uh, the end of my, uh, my presentation, and I think I did make the five minutes.
I get so excited when I hear those percentages. Now, we're coming to the most important part of the meeting, ladies, so if you want those windows and air conditioning, come on back. I want to tell you, though, and talk about a little bit about the property transfer tax initiative, that was something to be put before the voters to consider. You know, it's very easy to do the things that are politically expedient, and that's not ever talk about fees, taxes, or what have you. But to transition from where we are to where we need to be, we're gonna have to have some support for the general fund, and you're gonna have to have leaders that are courageous enough to tell you what your options are. There are members of the council that don't want you to know what your options are, or for political purposes, they make a big deal like, "Oh, they're taxing you again." Well, that's not true. What we're doing is responsible. We're letting you know what your options are. And this is nothing that can be happened without the vote of two-thirds of the people. Okay, I think Mr. Little's still here, is that right? No, yes. Oh, you know, let me tell you something. Uh, along this path that we've gone towards coming together as a community and moving forward beyond the past, we have the largest religious institution that's situated, oh, right across the street, and twelve thousand worshippers, a church that has a fantastic chief operations officer, chief executive officer, and he has been part of the fabric of this combination between business residents and faith community that has generated an extreme level of confidence in those that would invest in this city. And so I would really like to prevail upon him to come forward and just give us a few words, and that's Mr. Mark Little.
You would call on me when I'm...
You would call on me when I'm dressed in my Saturday goods and not prepared to say much, but I gotta tell you, I'm sitting here and watching and listening to all of the work that has gone on with all of the amazing new hires, going back to Mr. Fields and all of the new hires. The mayor and his leadership continue really to amaze me because Faithful Central has been in this community now for greater than 20 years. And as you know, this was our first facility in Inglewood, and we've grown beyond this and ultimately to the Forum. And it was during a time when it was very difficult to even get a traffic light on the Crossing Street here at Florence in Inglewood. And we're in a different place now. We're in a different city now. Inglewood has always been great, but it's so amazing to see what's happening and to see it and feel it and to smell it and touch it. It's an exciting, exciting time. And so I encourage each of you to go from this place and to go from receiving the information that you receive today and to spread it to at least two people and talk about the positive things that you've heard. I sat in the back and I was so encouraged to hear about what's happening in the school district. And one of my prayers is that we're able to bake what's happening in the school district, what the relationships are in this room today, so that our future understands what's happening here today, and they'll carry that torch. But it's gonna take the community to do that. It's gonna take all of us to join with her in what they're doing with the school district. And so it's such an exciting thing. And Mayor, I can only speak well of you and to have brought so many people to this microphone is really also a testimony to who you are. Because you could have stood here, you could have stood here and said all of the things that your staff is doing and taken all the credit. But to share with the community, the people who are behind the scenes making this happen is a mark of good and strong leadership. So I thank you, Faithful Central, thank you, and I'd be happy to show honor. We thank you and the staff.
I would tell you, we're about five minutes away from closing. In managing four organizations across three cities, in the last organization, I had 1,100 employees directly working for me in functional supervision of 4,000 counter tariffs and public safety assets. I would tell you that my greatest strength is finding talented people to work with me and giving them their due to do the things that they do. I don't look for people to rubber stamp what I say. I look for people to collaborate with. So, you know, the interesting thing is that we had only a couple of questions, and those questions have been answered. And so we're gonna let two people who ask to speak, speak. That's Henry Harris, followed by Pinky Nichols, and then we'll be concluding. Could we have a microphone for Mr. Harris? Hank? Go ahead, take mine. Do it all, Hank. Hello?
First of all, I appreciate that it's considered an honor to have an opportunity to speak. And my, my, the item I thought on my card mainly was a comment. And the comment is, "I'm feeling very positive about the direction of our city. I feel very excited about where we're headed and where we're going." And I guess I attribute that to the new leadership within the city of Inglewood. I started my professional career in the city similar to this years ago, and also started in Inglewood years ago, and I returned. And I am so excited about the direction that we're headed now. I live in the northwest section of the city of Inglewood, and I want to compliment the staff of Inglewood for the support that we currently get. Excuse me right now, I'm looking out of breath, but I do want to compliment the staff for supporting us in the public works and also in the police department. Once again, thanks, and I want to give up the mic.
That is quite a comment to applaud. I want to say thank you to Mayor Buckston, allowing me the privilege of speaking to you. I think we have a very qualified mayor who's able to make decisions and choose people that will bring Inglewood a long way. I tell you, one of the biggest problems that I have been confronted with since I've been in Inglewood since 1985 is that mental dividing in Los Encinitas. I tried for five years to get somebody in Inglewood to clean that thing up because it was an isolated community, that Senator Viner, Inglewood from Slauson down to Centinela. And I brought it to the mayor's attention, that I tried to get this cleaned up, and we wanted to clean it up ourselves, the community, that is the Heights and Ladera. Now, what the mayor said to me, "It will be cleaned by next Sunday, even about to bring my wife to help me." That was the following Sunday, but instead, on a Thursday, it was all cleaned up. I can tell you, the mayor is tremendous. He's okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. And with that, some excellent questions from Lynn. First, are there gonna be shuttles going from satellite parking lots to the Forum? And I guess she also means Hollywood Park tomorrow. An interesting thing, and this is very important, when these plans were made for the metro link to come through Inglewood, it was long before, you know, I ever thought of coming, running for office. And the decision was made to use the cheapest right-of-way to come through Inglewood between us and the airport, and that's where, along our train tracks. Well, unfortunately, our train tracks don't go by any place that's close to a business district anymore, with the exception of Market Street. And so the best thing would have been for the city and for the region, if the decision had been made to have that make a turn-down prairie, have a grade change, and then have it turned westbound on Century to the airport. Could you imagine the impact that would have had on commerce, both for the Forum and Hollywood Park tomorrow and a revitalization of Century Boulevard, but that wasn't done? So, but I'm not a crying, I don't drink beer, I'm not a curse the darkness person, and so let's light a candle with that. Right now, it goes down the train tracks. We have a station at Market and Florence, but for reasons I can't even fathom, it's on the north side of the street with no overpass to get to Market Street. You have to walk from the station to the light at Locust, cross the street, and walk a block back to get to Market. Now, who would do, who would do that? And so I'm prevailing upon the MTA to get us a pedestrian overpass so that you'll have a natural path to come to Market Street, which I believe one day will be mixed-use housing and retail. I believe that there'll be a renovation of the Fox Theater, which is a classic theater, that it'll be a dual-level type of arrangement, so that we retain, retain the, retain the historical theater for plays, events, and an underground, below-grade multiplex. That's what I envision. And that, that station will play into that. But we have to say, now, how are we gonna get people to the Forum and Hollywood Park tomorrow? We're probably going to have to, the only thing I can see is to run our own shuttle service, trolley service, from that Market Street and Florence transfer point, down Florence, down prairie, so that people using mass transit can get to our, to our attractions. And so those are excellent questions. You must, you must have, like, been reading my mind.
Is Century, is Century parking lots a satellite parking lot?
Yes. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure that, she's talking about, we have satellite parking lots. Actually, there's some on a parking ride on a pier just south of, at 120th and Crenshaw. And so we're gonna have to figure that out, how we're gonna get people from the parking rides to the destinations in our town. And she asked about the senior center. We've allocated $10 million from bond proceeds that were issued long ago. We cannot spend those bond proceeds until we have reconciliation with the state. With that, we're gonna close this meeting. I appreciate all of you that came and stayed for a very, very lengthy meeting. I hope that you have a better sense of how I think, how your government's operated. And I saw the time, you know, I visit people, say, "People want a town hall meeting." People say, "You should have a town hall meeting." I have meetings when I have something to say. Most politicians, they love a chance to have a meeting, and even if it's to curse the darkness and blame and, and say how bad things are, that, to them, that's like getting them votes. Well, I'm from a different sector of government. I'm from public safety. If we don't get things done, people get hurt. And I operate with that same sense of urgency. For you, for the business community, we don't have time. We're supposed to use time. And we will continue to use time effectively and efficiently for your best interests. Thank you very much.